Okay, we're about to adjourn the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, April 4th, 2016. I'd ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets in our regular meeting, we are ever mindful of all the many blessings and opportunities that have been showered upon us as are reflected in our agenda tonight. We are, first of all, thankful for the 28 years of dedicated service by Watch Commander Perez of the Batavia Police Department, and certainly wish him well, and ask for blessings upon his retirement. Tonight also, we are ever mindful of all the community volunteerism that exists in our community, including the coming celebration of Flag Day that's going to be on July 12th and 14th, and also the efforts by the folks that are putting on the post-prom for the Batavia High School students this May. So, we are a community blessed with volunteerism, and those trying to make our world a safer and kinder and more gentler place for us all to live. As always, we want to take this moment to remember so appropriately those from our community, and those throughout our United States of America who was serving so admirably in defense of our liberties on foreign soil, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of them as they go about their duties. Tonight always, we want to ask for your direction and guidance and blessings as we undertake the various items of business before us, knowing that each and every member of the City Council is here to do what in their best hearts and minds is in the best interests of our community. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Alderman Rosado, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is unified by the United States of America, and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Clark. Whoa, this is an old sheet, sorry. (laughing). Rosado.
Here.
Atech.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Homan.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Otterman.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Okay, let the record reflect that our 14 elected members of the City Council are present in the count for this evening's meetings, we obviously have the necessary form to conduct business. We move then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Atech is Governmental Services Chairman, do you have any?
I am not aware of any, so I don't believe there are any.
All right, moving then to item number five, which is presentation of our rather brief consent agenda. Alderman Atech?
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place and file the 2015 budget transfer list and reconciliation. Approvals, March 25, 2006 payroll for $848,824.51. Accounts payable check register for $557,965.59. City council minutes for March 7, 2016. Resolution 16-31-R, authorization to execute a one-year renewable contract with Clark Environmental Mosquito Management incorporated in the amount of $30,900, which was approved by the Committee of the Whole and recommended to be approved by Council, nine to zero. I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Move by Alderman Atech, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the consent agenda as presented, any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Otterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. All right, moving right along then to item number six, which is recognition tonight of Watch Commander Aguado Perez. And Chief Shira, if you would come forward, and Watch Commander, if you'd come up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Eddie?
Well, Eddie, Commander Eddie Perez here, came to us 28 years ago after serving a stint of duty with the Air Force and one and a half years at the Illinois Department of Corrections Valley View Center. And in that 20 years, 28 years serving with us, he served about every functional position that we have in here, from evidence section, field training officer, patrol officer, patrol sergeant, detective sergeant, a defensive tactic constructor, I can go on and on and on and on, Watch Commander. But one of the things he also did for us is do some specialized undercover drug operative work. And he not only worked for us, but he worked for the Illinois State Police North Central Narcotics Task Force, and the FBI Organized Crime Drug Task Force, and really did some exemplary work there. We'll greatly miss Ed, he's a friend of so many, so many people, and he only finished his tour of duty, his final tour of duty at 3:00 PM last Thursday, but I can tell you he's greatly Mr. Ready. We're always looking for Ed. So, Ed, the very best to you.
Thank you very much.
Let's turn it over to Mayor.
Yeah, and let me just kind of briefly piggyback on what the chief has just said. Ed has been somebody who has certainly, I think, reflected the very best attributes of the Batavia Police Department. Obviously, when you're the mayor, you get to hear a lot of stories, many of which you can't go out and publicly repeat, and I'm not about to do that tonight, but I can tell you that I am aware of a number of situations and circumstances where Watch Commander Perez certainly went far beyond what was required in duty. Some of it was very compassionate care that he showed to people who had been injured in a crime, or had been notified of somebody who they'd, who'd been lost in an accident, to circumstances that really require great physical skill on his part, and I believe you are a black belt karate instructor, are you not? So, he had the, certainly, he was nobody to mess with, let me just say that. But there were several, I would describe them as bad actors, that decided they wanted to come and perform in the community of Batavia, and good for us and unfortunate for them, they ended up performing before Watch Commander Perez in their deadly, dirty deeds, and as a result of that, we have some folks that are not on the streets anymore because he chased them down creek beds and other places that I can remember hearing the stories about. And so, really, at the end of the day, Watch Commander Perez is somebody who has truly made our town a very nice and wondrous place for us all to live and raise our families, and know that law and order was going to be maintained and held, and he did it in the various highest traditions, and with great professionalism and great demeanor that certainly stood the Batavia Police Department and the city of Batavia in great appreciation and pride for a gentleman who really did perform an outstanding service to our community. So, that being said, I've already done this once, but we're kind of repeating it here, I'm going to present Ed the official city plaque, which we have here. It says, "City of Batavia, Aguado Perez, in appreciation of 28 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Batavia and the Batavia Police Department, March 31, 1988 to March 31, 2016, and signed by myself as the mayor." So, Ed, on behalf of the citizens of Batavia, thank you for an outstanding career.[510.12][510.12](applause)
I guess this is where I get the opportunity to say thank you. Thank you for allowing me the chance and the opportunity to serve this community. It was a great honor. Most of all, it was, it was a fun ride. You know, they say that days, some of the days lasted forever, but for some strange reason, it seems the, the years go by really fast. And all of a sudden, you're here, you're here at this last, last meeting here, last time in uniform, and saying a few words to all you fine people. One of the things I will say, it's always been a, a good feeling when people would come up to me and say, you know, "Are you a police officer?" And I'd say, "Yeah, I'm a police officer. I'm a police officer in the city of Batavia." And a lot of times, when I say something like that, the response right away would be, "Batavia? There's not a lot of crime in Batavia, is there?" And I couldn't help but always answer the same way. Thanks. Thank you.[568.89][568.89](laughing). We have a great, great group of police officers in this town. Even at their worst times, and I think sometimes this is one of those times now that we're going through, even at the hardest times, these guys always do their jobs. They're always out there trying to do the best they can. And this is just, like I said, a small moment for me, but every time that you're out there, and every time it's a holiday, it's Christmas, Christmas Eve, remember, those guys are out there doing their jobs. And they're out there doing because they care about this community. This is a great community, it's worth caring about. And for me, it was an honor serving you, and it's even an, even stronger honor to be part of the Batavia Police Department.
So, let me run things from up here for a moment, because the next couple of things, I think, require that I be up here. I believe the next thing is a proclamation for the Batavia VFW Loyalty Day Parade. Alderman Atech, would you present that, please?
Whereas, the community of Batavia is honored and blessed to once more host the annual Loyalty Day Parade, which has been sponsored by the Batavia Veterans of Foreign Wars Post Number 1197 and its Ladies and Men's Auxiliaries for over four decades of civic life. And whereas this event serves to annually instill and reinforce the longstanding community commitment towards patriotism, volunteerism, and the vibrancy of the American spirit. And whereas the members of the Batavia VFW Post Number 1197 and its Ladies and Men's Auxiliaries annually donated thousands of hours and thousands of dollars to plan, organize, and produce the Loyalty Day Parade, which has won the hearts and admiration of residents from throughout the greater Fox Valley and beyond. And whereas the VFW Post Number 1197 has utilized the theme of the Loyalty Day Parade to promote a variety of community concerns and causes, including drug awareness, stranger danger, public safety, religious understanding, business development, public auction, and American patriotism. And whereas the annual Loyalty Day Parade has become a civic highlight and has written for itself a proud chapter of Batavia history that serves to remind and enlighten all citizens as to the need to illustrate our love of freedom, support for our nation and its institutions, and commitment to the values which surround the American dream. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, with approval by the vote of the City Council, do hereby proclaim that Sunday, May 1, 2016, shall be known throughout all of Batavia as Loyalty Day, and by the signing of this proclamation, do hereby encourage all residents of our town to attend and participate in the festivities and significance of this most meaningful community event. Signed, Mayor Jeff D. Shelkey. I move that we accept and approve the proclamation.
Second?
We have a motion, second, for the approval of the proclamation. Before we do that, I just want to make note that this is a special year in this regard, because the Loyalty Day Parade this year is going to signal the kickoff of Batavia's celebration of Flag Day, which we're going to do a special thing on, on June 12th and June 14th. And it is very special to our community, because as I'm sure most of you have probably heard me say this now several times, National Flag Day was proclaimed by Woodrow Wilson in June of 1916, which was 100 years ago. And the gentleman who led the national movement to have that done lived on the 1184 South Batavia Avenue, on the south end of Batavia Avenue, just north of the Lincoln Inn. His name was Dr. Bernard J. Segran, and he had been championing this idea for a long, long time, given the fact that the first American flag was first approved by the Continental Congress on June 14, 1777. And so, Batavia duly has the honor of being the place where 100 years ago, American Flag Day really originated and really was from. So, we're going to try to do some special, significant things, and Flag, or Flag Day will be, have its own celebration, but we're going to kick off kind of the sentiment in the community with the Loyalty Day Parade, and we're very appreciative that the VFW this year has adopted Loyalty Day as the Flag Day, as their kind of theme for the parade, and so we appreciate that cooperative spirit. But this will be kind of the first kickoff event, and then we will culminate it in July 4th with the 4th of July fireworks. So, first we'll have that, or this parade on Loyalty Day, and then we will have a celebration in the community for Memorial Day, and then follow, a few days after that, we will have Loyalty Day ceremonies, which will be over a two-day span. And then following that, we will do the culmination of it with the 4th of July fireworks. So, it's going to be kind of a, everybody in town, hopefully by the end of it, should know that we really were the home of National Flag Day. So, something for Batavia to be appreciative of, and I wanted to thank the VFW commander, Andy Frankie is here, and if you would like to make some comments?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The mayor kind of beat me to the punch a little bit. The parade theme, this is our 42nd parade, the parade theme this year is, I'm sorry, Flag Day Centennial Anniversary. So, we're hoping that everybody that comes to the parade will bring a flag with, to help kick off our Flag Day celebration. One thing I would like to mention, though, and it's probably my fault for not bringing it to everybody's attention first, is the proclamation states the VFW and Ladies Auxiliary. The Ladies Auxiliary is no more. The Ladies Auxiliary is celebrating, this would be their 80th anniversary. The National Ladies Auxiliary made the decision to be more inclusive and accept men that are, have the same eligibility guidelines, so now it's just the VFW Auxiliary. So, we're in a big transition right now. There's a lot of mixed feelings about it, but they're very proud to be starting this new tradition. So, we'll have to make sure that it's entered on the proclamation correctly next year.
Well, I appreciate the educational opportunity we used to put you on TV, as you did that, and we get the press here, so hopefully that word will go forth.
I hope so. A lot of people have worked hard to spread the new name and explain why the change is being made. So, our Men's Auxiliary has decided to turn in their charter, and they all joined the VFW Auxiliary, so it's kind of exciting. We're one of the first posts in the state to do that.
Very good.
But back to the parade. May 1 is the parade. We need volunteers and we need participants, and we are hoping that we can get every child in the community down there. We'll have bouncy houses at the VFW afterwards, there'll be hot dogs for all the parade participants, we'll have live music, burgers and brats, and things like that. So, last year it was a real good time, and I'm hoping we get good weather, and hopefully this year will be a great parade also. Thank you very much.
And I have a copy of the proclamation for you to have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and we'll be seeing you, I'm sure, on a number of occasions in the next few months.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next item of business is the Batavia Police Department. I'd like to ask Chief Shira if he would come forward, and I'll let him do the...
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, do we want to vote on this?
Yes, we never actually took the vote.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're way ahead of you. We have a motion, the second, for the approval of the VFW proclamation. Kirk, call the roll.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Otterman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no-nos, and none absent. All right, I will now turn it over to Chief Shira for his presentation about the Batavia post-prom.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, good news and bad news. The bad news is, we can give a check to the post-prom committee, because we had violators violating our tobacco code and our liquor code, but that's good news for the post-prom committee, so if you could come forward.
Yeah, come forward.
I'm privileged to present this check for $3,000 to the post-prom committee, and thank you for what you do.[1106.11][1106.11](applause).
We would like to thank you for this very generous donation. We have over 600 kids that usually participate in post-prom. This is our third year chairing this event, and it's a great...
Our 26th year.
Yeah, 26th year of having the event. So, we're just so honored to be able to be in this role, and to be able to provide this safe environment for our kids to come to after prom. This year's prom is downtown Chicago on the Odyssey boat, and then the kids will come to Funway for post-prom from 11:30, 12 o'clock until 3:00 in the morning. So, it's a fun, safe place for them to come, and there's all kinds of games for them to do, and we get generous donations from area businesses, and food restaurants like Pal Joey's, Chick-fil-A, Jersey Mike's, but this, this cost, this, that, this helps us to pay for some of that cost that we incur, so thank you so much for this generous donation.
Thank you.[1173.65][1173.65](applause).
Well, I would just like to say, certainly, I appreciate the good efforts of the Batavia Police Department, and as all of you know, when we enacted the ordinance of fines for liquor code violations, we amended it a few years later, and specifically dictated that any fine money that was gathered by that would be used in the purposes of drug and alcohol, education, and containment. And so, I think this is certainly a well-good use of that money, and one that has certainly, as I just said, we've had this party now for 26 years, and I know I've talked to a number of people now in adult life who will tell me about their nice memories of the Batavia post-prom party that they got to go to sometime in the last 26 years, as far as a good thing to do. So, I really appreciate the efforts of the committee, and want to thank them for putting together something that I don't know a lot of other towns that do it quite like this, and Batavia should be very, very proud of itself that we have this kind of dedication and cooperative spirit by not only the parents, but the community, in putting this together. And so, I was happy we could, last year we were a little bit short on money in the fund, but thanks to the compliance checks of the Batavia Police Department, we're, we're in good shape now for a few years in funding this thing. So, I appreciate the good efforts of the Batavia Police Department also. So, let me return to my seat. Okay, moving to item number nine, is there matters from the public for items not on the agenda? Do we have anybody? All right, moving to 10 is the presentation by the Batavia Chamber, and I see Holly is here and ready to go.
I am, thank you, Mayor. I kind of jumped the gun on that one. Thank goodness there wasn't a long public hearing, I would have been sitting in a weird seat. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you again this month. I figured after last month you would cut me off, but I appreciate you still keeping me on the agenda. I have several things to share with you, and I have a new member to present to you. He'll be coming up in just a second, but we have a couple more ribbon cuttings. We've had a very plethora of, plethora of them over the past month, and it seems as though the trend is continuing, so that's a good thing. I think that shows interest in growth of business in Batavia, and also new members in the chamber. So, you know, we don't just do these things because they're fun, but they are. We have gatherings by design, they're ribbon cutting on April 11 at 4:00 PM. They are a home-based business at this point, so they will be performing their ribbon cutting at the Chamber office. We have the Batavia Women in Business Luncheon, coming up next week, is April 12 at 11:30, Essentials for Your Business Toolbox. It's integrating social media into your marketing plan. And that's at Eagle Brook. We have the Two Fit Sis Ribbon Cutting. That is April 15 at 4:00 PM. Again, that's another small business that they will be performing their ribbon cutting at the Chamber office. 90 Ideas in 90 Minutes, it's a multi-chamber event. We have several local business owners that will be sitting on a panel, talking a little bit about some of the tools that they've had in success for their own businesses, and that is actually being hosted by Shaw Media at the Q Center. So, if you haven't been out there, we haven't had an event there in my two years, so I'm interested to go and see that. That is on April 20 at 11:00 AM. Then, on, also on April 20 at 4:00 PM, we're having our monthly Networking It event. We're changing it up a little bit, and we're making this a speed networking event. I know several of you are in the speed dating pool, but this is a speed networking event, so if you want to bring some of your dating, speed dating skills to the table, bring them to the event on April 20 at 4:00 PM. We'll be hosting that one at Water Street Studios. Some people are very uncomfortable in a networking environment, so we're trying to change it up this time to make it a little bit more comfortable for them. In addition to that, I wanted to point out that Alderman Mueller and I have a pretty exciting week coming up this, this week. We have decided to partner in visiting some of our local businesses, especially, most specifically in her ward, being a lot of the industrial facilities in our community, to sit down and chat with them about workforce, and what our community has to offer them from both inside this building and through workforce development. So, it's, I think, a great opportunity for us to get, from the Chamber perspective, our foot in the door with some of these larger businesses, and also for the city from an Aldermanic standpoint, get some of that input as well. So, I encourage you to reach out to the businesses in your wards to get a feel for what they're looking for, and I thought this was a great idea from Paula, and we're really excited to be a part of that in the, in the coming weeks, so. Any comments, questions, concerns, anything you wanted to share with me? Any of the questions I should be adding to the speed networking discussion? Just kidding.
Questions or comments? Well, thank you again for an excellent job.
Thank you. And I have to introduce this evening Matt Goals. He is co-founder with his wife of Prairie Wellness Counseling Center. They're just about a block away here, at 12 West Wilson Street, so I would like for you to give a big Batavia business welcome to Matt Goals.[1545.33][1545.33](applause).
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Holly, and thank you to this Batavia City Council. As Holly stated, my name is Matt Goals, and the co-founder, co-owner, and one of the four counselors at Prairie Wellness Counseling Center. We are located at the corner of Schumway and Wilson. As she stated, my wife and co-owner, Amy, who could not be here tonight, and I opened Prairie Wellness in 2013 with the idea of supporting the community and providing quality behavioral health care to the, to the community. We recently joined the Chamber at the end of 2015, and since that time, we have seen continued growth. Prairie Wellness Counseling Center provides behavioral health counseling to Batavia and its surrounding communities. We utilize evidence-based therapeutic interventions, including expressive arts, talk therapy, cognitive behavioral therapy, dialectical behavioral therapy, as well as others. Between the four counselors we currently have on staff now, we have an estimated combined experience of 35 years. While each counselor has their own specialty, for instance, I specialize in treating families with, shall we say, defiant adolescents. My wife specializes in treatments of anxiety disorders. We've helped children, teens, veterans, families, couples, and individuals through many of life's challenges. Since opening, we have served hundreds of individuals and families. With recent changes to the healthcare, we aim to continue to improve the lives of the residents of Batavia by reducing the stigma associated with mental illness and empowering individuals to make positive changes in their lives. To find out more about the services we offer, please see the flyer that was passed out, or visit our website at prairiewellness.org. Batavia is a special place to my wife and me. We have been residents of Batavia since 2011, and have been enjoying many of the offerings made by the community to our young family. We have been involved with everything from repeated participation in the Batavia Triathlon, to being business members of the Main Street, meeting Santa at the Peg Bonn Center, participating in the Green Fair held in summer, and shopping in the farmer's market, which, if weather indicated yesterday, we should have been there. We at Prairie Wellness like growth, both in ourselves and in others. We have seen around 40% growth this past year, and I would anticipate another strong year. Due to this growth, we have been able to bring on more local counselors over the past six months. What this means is that we can assist more people in the community, maintain their quality of life, at work and/or school. I like what the Health Resources and Action stated in 2013. A healthy community is where people come together to make their community better for themselves, their families, their friends, their neighbors, and others. A healthy community creates ongoing dialogue, generates leadership opportunities for all, embraces diversity, connects people and resources, fosters a sense of community, and shapes its future. Because Prairie Wellness interacts with many different businesses and parts of the community with the work that we do, it has helped us to connect even more so to the Batavia community. I would like to thank the Batavia Police and Fire Department for being incredibly professional and prompt when called upon. We have also received substantial resources and support from the local schools and businesses in the Chamber. In fact, last week, we met with Chris Ason to discuss the possibility of a TIF grant for expansion. The National Institute of Mental Health states that 1 in 5 adults in America will experience a mental illness this year. 1 in 25 adults will... will experience a mental illness this year. One in 25 adults will experience a severe mental illness that will incapacitate them in some way. This means that serious mental illness costs America $193 billion in lost earnings per year. This can affect Batavia. SAMSA points out that of those adults who had mental illness, only 42% received mental health services. And, in my opinion, that's far too low. I'd like to end with this. Mental illness is a medical condition like diabetes. It is treatable and it is manageable. You may not have a mental illness, but statistically speaking, you know someone who has or will. Be a friend to them by encouraging them to seek help, and Prairie Wellness is proud to offer counseling services here in the Batavia community. Thank you very much.
While we got you up there, was we have you on TV here, and people are watching this at home. You told us your address, 12 West Wilson, correct?
Correct. We locate on the second floor.
Can you give us your phone number and your email address, or your computer address, however you want to call it?
Of course. The phone number is 630-715-5740, and the best email address is info@prairiewellness.org.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming down. We appreciate all the good things you're doing for our town, and helping it grow in its fabric of health and vitality and mind enhancement. And we appreciate all the good things you are doing, have done, and will do in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving then to item number 11. We need a motion to grant the Batavia Access Committee status for two events which need City Council approval and city insurance. They are the 100th Anniversary Celebration for American Flag Day on June 12th and 14th, 2016, and the Community to Farm Table Dinner on Sunday, August 7th, 2016, on North River Street. Would somebody care to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Callahan, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of their granting access status to those two events. Any discussion? Kirk Haller-Roe, please.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion's approved. 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Okay, moving to item number 12. Chief Shira, can you come up and maybe tell a little bit about this situation? Do you get, I think, the details? This is to approve a Class F liquor license, which I'm going to recommend that we waive the fee for a dinner theater at the East Side Community Center on April 30th, 2016.
You just described it.[784.63][784.63][laughter] You preempted me. Well, just as you said, the Tri-City Health Partnership Incorporated out of St. Charles is having a fundraiser, and it's their annual fundraiser event, Dinner and Show, held at the East Side Community Center, Shannon Hall. And they're asking for a Class F license. We've done a background investigation, find no problem whatsoever, so we would ask the City Council to approve that, and as you mentioned, Mayor, to waive the fee, as a not-for-profit organization.
Somebody care to make that motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Fisher, for the granting of the Class F license and for the dinner theater on April 30th, waiving the fee. Any discussion? Kirk Haller-Roe.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rusado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Motion's approved. 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Thank you, Chief. All right, moving to 13, the Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, the Committee of the Whole passed or recommended the ordinance taking away the exclusion for facilities that sell motor fuel to be able to sell liquor license, sell liquor, excuse me, that'll be coming to the City Council on April 18th. Kevin Drundle is looking at the city's authority regarding regulation of massage establishments. We're working with tentative building of about 350,000 square feet in our industrial park. We should know more in the next few weeks, and we'll certainly let you know. A few weeks ago, we had a tabletop exercise at the Emergency Operations Center with, along with Kane County ESDA, and this was part of our, you know, ongoing training to be ready in case the community had to deal with a catastrophe of some sort. This was a tabletop exercise relating to a potential for a tornado. It's good for us to keep up with this. I wanted to thank Chief Deike and Mark Davis. They did a really nice job with, and have been doing a nice job with the ESDA operation, which showed on, I think, Saturday when we had those poles go down. The tabletop exercise was also part of the program leading, that will lead to the certification of ESDA, which will be a first time, so that's a great thing. Peggy Colby will be bringing the resolution authorizing the city to start the IEPA loan process related to the wastewater treatment project. It'll be followed by a bond ordinance being prepared by our outside bond council. The RFPs for the Fox River Erosion Project is what we're calling it in-house. They're out. They're due back 11, April 11th. There was a mandatory project walk on March 31st, attended by six quality engineering firms, all with good experience in this subject area. There were very few questions, so they really broke the meeting and went right out to the site and walked along the river. We're in the midst of obtaining an easement agreement from one of the riverbank owners, who we've already met with and indicated that they'll be certainly amenable to the investigation that'll be going on to protect the riverbank. We're meeting next week with the Park District to organize all the various activities and the concerns relating to the river and the separate projects and processes, and bring that back for a joint meeting between the city and the Park Board. The staff is meeting this week on some population estimates and under other land use assumptions that Kane County is relying on to formulate the next version of its transportation impact fee. We want to make sure that it's accurate. We understand the need for this impact fee, but it is absolutely a real burden for new business, and we need to make sure that it measures what it's supposed to be measuring. So. Bids are coming in for the Wilson Street sidewalk construction. This will complete an important link between the sidewalk on the north side of Wilson Street, between the Heritage Ridge facility and running all the way to Kirk Road. This will be done at the same time that some pedestrian signal heads are being installed to make the crossing to the new Speedway safer on the outside of town. This week is the beginning of a yard waste collection. It'll be picked up in paper bags or clearly marked containers, along with a waste sticker on your regular garbage days. And information about the city's annual rain barrel sale and a presentation on water conservation that will be here at City Hall, as well as the extension of the City Parkway Tree Program until April 8th can be found on the front page of the city website. Lastly, I think the City Council and the Mayor received a letter from a resident today expressing some consternation over, I think, some fee changes and cost changes by a local cable provider. And I just wanted to make it clear that I think there was a, maybe a misunderstanding in the letter that the city has any authority whatsoever over what the charges are that can be imposed by the cable companies. The city has absolutely no fee regulatory authority. These businesses are, they're free to charge in the market. Any kind of authority really is with the state and the federal government. So, in fact, the city has very little authority to even not renew a franchise. Really, the city's, the city's role in these matters is to be kind of protectors or trustees of the public rights of way, and to make sure that they're available for things that are important to the operations of the community. And once the rules are followed, that make sure that people are kept safe by these, safe when these improvements or these kinds of things put in, really, a lot of our role kind of goes away. So, there's, at the moment, there are other available ways to get television service, depending on where you live in the community, and I just wanted to, I thought it was a good idea to bring that up, because there seemed to be a misapprehension of how that works. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions, the Administrator? Thank you, Mr. McGrath?
Thank you.
Okay, Committee Reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow evening, April 5th, we're going to have a Committee of the Whole meeting that starts at 7:30. A few items on the community development agenda. One is the detention area rezonings over on the southeast side of town. The 11 East Wilson Street conditional use for a massage facility that went through Plan Commission is being recommended to the community, Committee of the Whole with the positive recommendation. And then the zoning ordinance amendments for miscellaneous business-friendly incentives that we've been hearing, that the staff has been working on, trying to come up with some recommendations to the council. Those are the three items that Community Development will have. The Plan Commission is scheduled to meet Wednesday, April 6th, at 7:30. On their agenda is the conditional use, or not the conditional use, I'm sorry, the design review for the Dunkin' Donuts and the Shell Station up on the corner of Houston Street and Batavia Avenue. Historic Preservation is scheduled to meet April 11th at 5:30, and that's all I have, Your Honor.
Questions of the Community Development? Government Services, Alderman ATAC?
Government Services, it's kind of light this month. April 18th, we will discuss ordinance 16-19, the Class B liquor license, liquor sales at gas stations. And that is it.
Okay. City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow night on the Committee of the Whole, we have erosion study easement for property right along the Fox River, and then drainage investigation contract for the east side. That's all. Thank you.
Public Utilities, Arnold O'Brien?
Thank you, Your Honor. Doesn't look like we have much throughout the month of April, but there is a, I guess, would be, excuse me, a closed meeting tomorrow night, the sale and purchase of electric power, an agenda item for that executive session. That's about all we have, Public Utilities, for April.
Okay. Do we have other business from the City Council? All right, going to myself. I've got a few things I'd like to share with you. Number one is, I think you've seen on the agenda tomorrow night, Bill Balling is coming for his first of two meetings with the JACOW this month. And one of the things he's coming out tomorrow night to report to you is, is that we were very pleased to, at the end of the day, receive 46 applicants for the City Administrator's job. And he's going to share with you details of that whole situation, and where it's at, and how it's going. And obviously, we'll be bringing in candidates for you to talk to here very shortly, but he's doing background checks and other things that are necessary in that arena right now. So, and feel free to come tomorrow night with any questions. He's anticipating he's going to be here talking with you for about an hour and a half. So, please, and I certainly would encourage all of you, if you can come, we have to do this in executive session, because he says, you know, you're talking about personnel, and you've got some names, and several of the applicants apparently are, a number of them are existing administrators in other towns who have asked for confidentiality, as best it can be preserved for not divulging that they're applying here and whatever. So, that'll be going on tomorrow night for about an hour and a half. And then, he's also anticipating that he's going to come back the last Tuesday of the month, on the 26th, and give you a rather, a further update, and then get ready for some interviews to take place probably in the month of May. That's kind of the schedule we've chatted about to this point in time. But, as you all requested, and as I think he's trying to do, you all are having a direct involvement in this selection process, so I really would encourage you all, if you can make it tomorrow night, to come down and hear what Bill's going to report to you. I think it would be a worthwhile exercise on your part. I wanted to talk a little bit, in a positive nature, about what happened this past Saturday. As all of you know, I don't know how to describe it, I'm certainly not a weatherman, but it would appear that we had something like a microburst that came down and hit out at, almost at the corner of Fabian Parkway and Western Avenue. And just like the last time out there, we didn't take as many poles this time as we did the last time, but I think we had four or five that got busted off and dropped into the backyard, didn't go into the backyards, but they were hanging in the backyards. And that was quite a dramatic event. And then that was immediately followed within seconds of a second event that, in almost a straight line, went over to the 100 block of North Jackson Street, and basically took a 100-plus-year-old tree and ripped it right out of the roots of the ground, and then proceeded to throw it on top of a house, a car, and a garage over two properties. And needless to say, the, those two events by themselves cost the city of Batavia probably thousands of dollars in damage and repair and insurance claims and everything else, because the tree was on city right away. So, then ironically, in fact, I was around Saturday, and I did take some pictures, and I haven't gotten them back. I'm going to try to do that yet tonight when we get down to the meeting. But as most of you may know, Saturday, at this exact time this was happening, over at the Fermi Lab High Rise, Tom Skilling from WGN had that place jam-packed with every prominent meteorologist in the state of Illinois and probably the Midwest, was in there at his little tornado seminar that's become a huge event, and he was streaming it all over the world, I guess, if you wanted to watch it. And if I laid, which I did this today, if I laid a ruler on the map and started it, laid it at the corner of Fabian and Western Avenue, and then put it over on the 100 block of Jackson Street, and you took that ruler over to the east side, we were almost in due a straight line with the Fermi Lab High Rise, with all those meteorologists sitting there when this happened, you know, within a mile or two. So I'm planning, I took some pictures on Wednesday, on Saturday, I'm planning to send them to Tom Skilling. Now, I know him, because as most of you know, his parents did live in Batavia up at the Homestead for several years, and I was friends with his father. And so I've met him several occasions. I'm going to send it in to him, just for the fun of it, to say, here's what your crowd outside was just about to be hit with, because you were on a straight line for this thing, and it seemed that wind capacity seemed to narrow itself into a very confined little area pouch going across the west side of Batavia. Apparently, when it got over the Fox River or something, it kind of lost its spunk and kind of evaporated into space. But, it was a powerful force when you look at what it did over there on Western Avenue. So, immediately after that happened, my phone, my cellphone started lighting up, and the first one was that it got almost immediately put on Facebook or the internet or something. And so the Chicago media called me, right away, wanted to know if they should be dispatching a mini cam out here to take pictures of the damage. And I told them, you know, there's probably some more eventful things in this region that would better serve you than driving all the way out here to take pictures of four poles and one tree. But, they got a wind of it. And then I entertained a number of calls from the local newspapers about it as to what really had happened. And after some to-do, we were able to straighten everything out, I think, as far as, you know, the poles. We had, given the intensity of the wind and everything else, it was not a good idea to try to take those damaged poles down on Saturday afternoon. So what was done is they depowered all that area out there and removed all the power from that line. And then they had to move around, and our city electricians, and reroute power through the area so that we could get that whole area back into power without it going on to those lines that were laying in the tops of people's backyards over there. So we were able successfully to do that. I think, within three hours, I'm led to believe that most people, almost by 2:00, were back in power. There was some that didn't get it for a little bit later, but we were quickly trying to restore all this. And I guess where I'm going with these comments are, I think Saturday afternoon was a classic example of the value of a municipally-owned electric utility. Had we not had that cruise here and that ability to bring those guys in on such short notice, some of them reported for work, they put a page out and said, anybody is available, please come on in. And most, we did have a great turnout from our guys. We were able to get that power back on. I would suggest to a lot of people that if you lived someplace else, you would have been waiting a lot longer than, you know, two to three hours max to get your power back on, given the immensity of that situation that unfolded itself. So let's strike one up for the electric utility and how that all thinks. to get that power back on. I would suggest to a lot of people that if you lived someplace else, you would have been waiting a lot longer than, you know, two to three hours max to get your power back on, given the immensity of that situation that unfolded itself. So, let's strike one up for the, the electric utility and how that all thing came together. The other thing I just, the School Board President was here and she just left. I was hoping she would have stayed, so I should have said this in front of her, but there is a, we're, we're getting ready, we're working on it right now, we're getting ready to, to go to press or go to print with the Neighbor's Magazine, and I obviously always write something in there. This month, I'm not going to write a lot. I've got a little picture that I'm going to try to insert in my part of the magazine, and it goes along with this thing we talked about earlier with the Flag Day, but what's interesting is, it shows the Batavia High School eighth-grade class a hundred years ago at the West Side School. Now, in those days, we had two eighth grades. We had one at the Central School on the west side, and we had one at, what was they called? The East Side School, which became Louise White on the, on the east side. So, we had two, two eighth-grade classes. The one on the west side is memorable, and it really, significantly is, because in this small class of people, we had such people as, we had Dr. Lucille Gustafson, who later became quite well-known in our area, and among those things that she did was, she was one of the true founders of Willbontsey Community College, and really served a work to get it up and running, helped pass the referendum to get it going, served on the original board, built a lot of the buildings, and did a lot of things. We also had in that class Virginia Segrand, who was the daughter of Dr. Bernard Segrand, who was the father of American Flag Day. And we also had in that class a gentleman by the name of John Mauer, and John Mauer graduated from Batavia High School, went on to college, and then subsequently became the basketball coach at West Point Military Academy. Then he was basketball coach at the University of Kentucky, and so he really made quite a name for himself in professional sports. And then also in that class, we had a young lady by the name of Marion Moon, who was the daughter of the Minister of the Methodist Church, and she later became the mother of Buzz Aldrin, who put the first American flag on the moon in nineteen sixty-nine. Now, a hundred years ago, in one little class in Batavia, we had these four, four kids, amongst some other nice people that were contributors to town, but the four I just talked about had far-reaching lives that had, in some instances, national, if not beyond this world impacts on the world. So, you know, I think it speaks well for, you know, we have a lot of people moved to Batavia today, and you ask, why did you move here? And they say, well, I wanted to get into the public school system here. And there's a reputation and a history there that I think that's why people are coming in here, but, you know, I got to tell you, there aren't a lot of other places that, and I'll sit here and say I'm bragging, that, that can, can tell you the story I just told you, that a hundred years ago this year, had an eighth-grade class in this town that had people like I just told you coming out of this, this particular community. So, it speaks well to, you know, what we've had in the past, and I, obviously, it should lead us to ask, you know, those on our, on our school board and those in the community today, well, who do we have sitting in those classrooms today? I mean, given the wonders of the world and the technologies and the great thinking that's going on, I mean, it's really awesome, I guess would be the proper way to describe this, of things that you can think could be happening in Batavia schools today, if we can go back a hundred years ago to this month and look at who was there then, who could be there today. So, I think that, you know, with this whole thing with Flag Day and everything, I think there's, there's kind of a magical moment to it that is something more than just reliving a little history. I mean, it, I, hopefully, causes people to realize what's been here in the past and what can be here in the future. And, you know, I look at some of the programs that, you know, we are involved with in the school system today, and, you know, we've had the, the young gentleman down here with the robots and everything else. You, you see what is already, you know, that was a hundred years ago would have blown everybody's socks off, but if you looked at who was here, was not much going for them a hundred years ago with what we've, we've shown you recently with the robot guys, I mean, think of what those people could be doing in the future for the world around us. So, it's fabulous what's happening, and I, you know, I think many times we have a tendency in government to put ourselves into kind of a negative thinking, and, oh, man, it's all going to pot and nothing's happening, and it's all, there's a lot of great stuff happening, and I think we need every now and then to say something good in government and look forward to, you know, what we've done as a community and as a nation and as a state, and, you know, there's a lot of razzle-dazzle and negativity flying around us today, but at the end of the day, there's some history here that we can be extremely admiring and proud of, and there's some opportunity, and there's some unknowns for the future that I think are limitless as to where we as a country and a city and a community can be going. So, I just wanted to kind of share that as we get into this whole Flag Day thing, because there is some, some memorable moments that have occurred, and there's probably a lot more that will be occurring because of what we are doing and because of the type of community we are and the way we, we educate our children and raise them and treat them and put them out into the world. No wonder we got a lot of people beating on the doors wanting to move in here. And I guess I'll stop there. I've talked too much already, but I appreciate your thoughts on what, what has happened, and again, I really would help, encourage you to come tomorrow night and hear what Bill's got to report, because I think it could be good stuff for us in that regard, too.